Good evening, everyone. I call this October 22nd, 2024 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Benson will be attending via Zoom, and we do have a quorum. We'll have a silent invocation, and she hasn't been warned, but Debbie Jo Almaguer, I'm going to ask you to lead the Pledge of Allegiance since we only have you for a few more months as our Director of Crows. Please join me in a moment of silence for those suffering from the terrible weather that we are experiencing in the country. Please join me in silence. Thank you. Please stand and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just.
Thank you, Director Almaguer. Item three on our agenda, announcements or additions or changes. Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are none.
Thank you. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I move approval of the agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. We will have to do roll call voting since Commissioner Benson is online.
All right, you want a roll call now, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. Chair Barbara Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas?
Yes.
Stephen Michael Casada?
Aye.
Adrian Barboa?
Aye.
Walt Benson?
Aye.
Thank you. So called.
That passes. Thank you. Item four, Proclamations. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Laura and Mike, could you come up, please? Thank you so much for coming this evening. It's my great privilege to do an acknowledgement to Michael and Laura Chavez. This acknowledging, the First Impressions Rodeo Club Incorporated was established in 2004 to enhance the sport of rodeo in Burnaleo County, to encourage our community, more specifically the youth in sporting and promoting rodeo opportunities, to provide and promote a safe environment for all youth participants, to improve and provide better safety standards when it comes to youth rodeo, to promote a healthy youth environment, and to develop public awareness concerning the needs of youth rodeo sports programs in Burnaleo County, and acknowledging Mike Chavez, who served as the President of the First Impressions Rodeo Club, Inc., since 2004 until his retirement from the post, and acknowledging that behind every strong man is a stronger woman. In this case, Michael's wife, Laura Chavez, who served as the Chair of the Board, the Social Media Director, Treasurer, and special acknowledgement for Laura as the designer of the beautiful belt buckles awarded to top winners in the youth rodeos, and acknowledging that club members have gone to great lengths to make children's lives better, and that ensuring children have positive experiences through rodeo have been Michael and Laura's mission and will be their legacy, and acknowledging that Michael and Laura's long history of youth rodeo productions on behalf of the youth in our community is admirable, and acknowledging that over the past two decades, under the Chavez's leadership, the First Impressions Rodeo Club has grown to a successful rodeo event where children come from across the southwest region to attend these events and compete for awards and cash payouts. Now therefore be it resolved that Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners acknowledges Michael and Laura Chavez for their service for the First Impressions Rodeo Club, Inc., and their enthusiastic and generous service to our community and youth rodeo. We wish them the very best in their retirement. Done this 22nd day of October 24th in Burnaleo County, the state of New Mexico, presented and signed by all county commissioners. Thank you so much. We'd like for you to say a few words if you don't mind.
Thank you, Commissioners. It was an honor for the last 20 years to, you know, we started off with 20 kids from the South Valley and ended up with 150 kids from all over the state and the surrounding states, Arizona, Texas, Utah, and Colorado, excuse me, were also participating in our rodeo. But we would not have been able to be as successful as we were over the years without the Burnaleo and the facility, you know, and we certainly appreciate them for all of their, you know, dedication, you know, the Commissioners that were on that side of town. They supported everything that we were doing out there for the kids, and I would like to give a special recognition, didn't write anything down for her, to Ms. Debbie Jo for all of her support and, you know, with every, we couldn't have been as successful without her because she's a cowgirl at heart, you know, and she was at every rodeo, and we appreciate everything that Debbie Jo did for us out at the arena. Thank you, Ms. Debbie Jo.
Thank you.
So, Michael and Laura, if you would come up, I'd like to give you this proclamation as well, and come take a photo with us.
Come on up, Debbie Jo.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, yes, Commissioner Barboa.
I guess just to ask the First Impression Rodeo Club continues.
Is it going to continue?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we were trying to pass the torch on and nobody was willing to take that task on, so this will probably be the end of it.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you so much.
Move on to Agenda Item Five, Certificates and Awards. Land Management Recognition, Commissioner Olivas, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I know we have a number of members of our land management team and our Crows team here. If you all would like to come forward, this is really important to me as somebody that has worked in the landscape and land management industry basically my entire life, started my business career in that, and an understanding that the folks in these roles are, you know, the definition of essential employees and the folks that make our county run and make our facilities places and spaces for the public to enjoy, to be safe, and at the end of the day, these are just the public servants that make our county run, and it's, the work they do is so important, it's often underappreciated, but I wanted to take a few moments here after we concluded East Mountain Celebration a few weeks ago, all the work that your team put into that, all the work that your team puts into all the events across the county, but it's not just events, it's so much more, all the facilities and other things that you all do. So I'm going to read this acknowledgement and then, you know, would love for you all to share a few words and take a picture with us. So, "The Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge members of the Burnaleo County Land Management Section. The Burnaleo County Land Management Section is responsible for maintenance and improvement of 1,167 acres of parks, athletic fields, little league complexes, streetscapes, county facility landscapes, and an additional 1,042 acres of open space property. Under the direction of Section Manager Raoul Munoz Jr., the section's employees provide landscape maintenance, landscape maintenance, construction, and redevelopment of turf, zirascapes, and irrigation systems. They conduct certified safety inspections to include our playground audits, general site inspections, soil analysis, and water audits, ensuring that all applicable safety standards and water conservation standards are met or exceeded. And they coordinate setup of equipment and site preparation to support county special events, ceremonies, functions, the whole nine yards. The men and women of the land management team are true professionals and skilled laborers in their respective trades. These individuals often perform their work outdoors under less than ideal conditions to maintain public spaces for the safety and enjoyment of the community. Our land management team is critical to the efforts to conserve water, maintain basic infrastructure, and foster a healthy and sustainable community in Burnaleo County. It is with much appreciation that the Burnaleo County Board of Commissioners honors and recognizes the Land Management Section for all the hard work its employees do to maintain and improve the county's public spaces and their contributions to the success of special county events." Please join me in a round of applause for the wonderful man. Would you care to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner. Really appreciate the honor, also to the members of the Board. Thank you so very much for always trusting in us to do the events. We're a team led by our Director Debbie Jo and, of course, our DCM, Danette, so the people behind me are John Barney and Ed Martinez. We have an amazing group at Land Management, and I want to say thank you again for recognizing us.
Thank you.
Please come on up.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Public Comment and Communications. We will first start with Public Comment. Each person has two minutes, and you'll be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record, and to maintain order and decorum, we ask that you stick to your two-minute timeframe. Thank you. Julianne, can you read the names, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four in-person speakers and one online. We will start off with Mr. Don Schrader, followed by Gerardo Cionello, followed by Mary Ingham.
Don Schrader, the Bible says Jesus promised that God will help those who pray. The Bible calls God Father 180 times in Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. Millions of people for thousands of years have begged God desperately for help from starvation, floods, fires, slavery, tornadoes, earthquakes, family violence, sickness, rape, torture, hurricanes, war. God did not help them. How can anyone believe God is our Father? Billions of prayers will not stop the climate crisis. Billions of prayers will not prevent nuclear war. I was a very sincere young Christian preacher 58 years ago in Virginia and Illinois. For many years, I prayed to God, I preached about God, I sang about God, my imaginary friend. I swallowed and I spread false advertising for God. With the help of many people, I slowly woke up. I was wrong. I apologize. I wish, I wish we had an all-powerful, fair, loving, parent God who would help all people begging desperately for help, but wanting that does not make it so.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Gerardo Cionello, followed by Mary Ingham, followed by Rudolph Serrano.
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners, and I hope you guys have these copies. It's America Invaded. And first of all, I believe in the power of prayer. If it wasn't for the power of prayers by my parents and families and members, I wouldn't be here talking to you right now. So, most of you know I waited nine years legally to become a naturalized citizen, US citizen. In fact, our country has gotten worse since I've become a naturalized taxpayer citizen many years ago. So, crimes, I just want to talk about some of the, they're all in here for much, much details, and something to talk about is our crime. Crime is in a, are in an increase, and it's really moving towards where I live in the west side and among other places in Albuquerque as well as in the South Valley. The crime, thousands of illegal aliens enter in the US or committing crime against Americans, including highness offenses like the murders and assault of Lincoln Riley, Kayleigh Hamilton, Jocelyn Nungaray, and hundreds more. Meanwhile, due to Biden, Harris policies, Immigration and Customs Enforcement has reported deported fewer criminal illegal aliens. In fiscal year 2022, ICE only removed 44,096 criminal aliens, which is a 62% decrease from fiscal year 2020, a pandemic year. Now terrorists and dangerous foreign nationals are streaming across border in record numbers. In fiscal year 2023, a record-breaking 169,000 known or suspected terrorists were arrested in southern border. Now I'm going to jump into the invasion about this invasion aspect of it. It exposes children horrifying health condition, constant criminal threat, labor and sex trafficking, slavery, robbery, rape, and other experiences not done justice in mere words. States have found thousands of illegal aliens on air border rolls recently in Virginia, remove over 6,300 non-citizen. I'd just like to know how will you stop this border crisis invasion before somebody gets hurt? Thank you. May God bless you.
Good evening, Chair Baca, Commissioners, and we, the people. My name is Mary Ingham, and I am running for the County Commissioner in District Two, and last meeting we had an update on the bridge project, which has been pretty tough on the people there. I'm a resident of Los Padillas neighborhood in the far south valley, and we have an upcoming project on Isleta Boulevard coming up, which is a major road in the South Valley for anybody who's lived down there. You have to almost use that to get out of a lot of areas of the valley. And there have been public meetings, input meetings, which unfortunately seem to be more of a, this is what we're going to do for you kinds of meetings rather than real ability for the public to have true input and their ideas taken into consideration because the plans appear to be already made. I've been to several meetings where that is the case, but Isleta Boulevard was part of the original Camino Real from Mexico City up into Santa Fe, and it was part of the historic Route 66. So all the people that I've talked to just want a, basically a smooth road without the wagon ruts, and that's pretty much what we would like there, and not to have a giant project with all the curves and gutters and things that don't allow the rural nature of the South Valley to continue. The tractors can't, you know, go with those type of curbs and the spaces cut down so much. Also, there's parking for people to come and visit on Isleta. That would all be taken away. I don't know where people's family or friends would be able to park on that road. So I just like reconsideration that instead of those, at the worst, you know, would be the smooth gutters without the hard edges that tractors and machinery could move through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ingham.
Commissioner, head Commissioner Baca, all Commissioners, thank you very much for last time, Mr. Olivas, and, well, we're almost in election time. It's almost over. I told my kids I'm out of politics until next year, so enjoy the time. But today, what I have to hear today, I will speak a little bit of breaking good, you know, and we'll do Jewish mobs since we have here Mr. Solomon asking for money, five kilos a month back in the days in the eighties, the Solomon Brothers, man, the Hungry Bear, 505, and my only thing here is that they always bankrupt. They get the money, we're given the money, they make the business, they bankrupt and leave it like that, and finally with the sour meal, he did it right, and now we have the sour meal coming up, and it's going to be the new era, you know, the new place for everything to come in, but we need to make sure they promise that this is not going to be a bankrupt where we're going to be left behind like on all their prior businesses. And I think that's important because it's $140 million or so, and it's a great enterprise. I know they got their act together, but we still have to make sure, you know, that we keep on, I will do that, I will do that. But, so that was interesting, you know, how everything comes around in history, you know, how every family changes and all that, and I was behind blessing them all, and I hope they bless me back with some grand contracts or something, but we'll see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We have one remote speaker for the record. Her name is Michelle Melendez, but we are not seeing her online, so that'll conclude Public Comment.
Okay. Thank you, Julianne. That concludes Public Comment. We will go to Communications. Constitutional Amendments One and Two. I have asked our County Assessor to come and, as an educational opportunity for our community, describe those. There's been some questions about those. These are constitutional amendments that will appear on our, well, that are on our ballot that we are voting on this election. So, Mr. Assessor.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having me. Once again, my name is Damjanara. I am your Burnaleo County Assessor. You're right, these two ballot initiatives are constitutional amendments that will be provided to the voters statewide. I'll limit my comments into how they will affect Burnaleo County as a whole, both Burnaleo County Government as well as Burnaleo County for the residents as well. Constitutional Amendment Number One is a very difficult amendment to explain, and I'll do my best to keep it in terms that the public can understand. Currently, the state of New Mexico provides a 100% disability waiver for veterans who have a 100% service-connected disability. Means you're a 100% disabled veteran, you have a 100% property tax exemption. Constitutional Amendment Number One would amend the Constitution to provide for a percentage of disability that would be proportional to your property tax exemption. So if you're, for example, 90% service-connected disability and a veteran, of course, and a veteran, of course, you would see a ninety percent exemption on your property tax values if you're forty percent, a forty percent reduction in your property taxes. This is a percentage. So, for example, a veteran who lives in a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home would see a much larger tax savings than a veteran who is same disability with a home with a value of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. That, that would be a very disproportionate amount of savings, even though they have the same percentage of disability. The other concern that we have in calculating the impact both to the county's tax revenues as well as the municipalities, villages, school districts, and everybody else, is that there is no clear information on the number of veterans with a service-connected disability. The most recent information that we have and that's been provided by RSTF, the Revenue Stability Cension Tax Committee, is four years old. We also don't know or can't tie all of those veterans to specific homes or if they are homeowners at all. Many, unfortunately, of the greater percentage of disability veterans are not property homeowners. Many of them unfortunately are homeless. Many of them are in transitional housing, and many of them are renting. So while those numbers may be accurate, we don't know if they're homeowners or not and therefore would not benefit from this constitutional tax amendment, but really makes it difficult to understand or quantify the, the amount of tax revenue or tax savings that they would be acquiring. So that also makes it very difficult to calculate the, the percentage of assessments and resulting tax revenue losses to the county, the city, school districts, and everything else. With that being said, you know, the best we can do is provide a best guest estimate range. Some estimates are as low as two million dollars, and some estimates are as high as ten million dollars. And that is just for constitutional amendment number one. Constitutional Amendment number two would purport to increase the second current constitutional veterans exemption program that the state of New Mexico provides. So everybody who is a honorably discharged veteran living in the state of New Mexico qualifies for a four-thousand-dollar exemption off of their property. By contrast, if you're a homeowner, you get a two-thousand-dollar exemption off of your head of, if you're a head of family, which means single, individual, married couples, as well as families, all, all qualify for the head of family exemption. It's two thousand dollars. And currently, if you're a veteran, you add another four thousand dollars to that exemption. The constitutional amendment would purport to increase the four-thousand-dollar exemption to ten thousand dollars and to index it for inflation. That one is a little bit easier to calculate for the entire county and all taxing authorities. It's about five-point-two million dollars. Burnaleo County's share of that would be about one-point-oh-eight million dollars. So in total, we're looking at ranges for Burnaleo County's revenue somewhere between two-point-five million and almost twelve million dollars in tax revenues. So this is not assessed value, this is not taxable value, this is not, this is real dollar hits to the county. That would be, and I would defer to interim county manager Reagan to, to tell you what that, that particular impact of a, would be to, to the county's budget. What it means to property owners is that they will see more than likely an increase in taxes for their property. Because again, it's not just Burnaleo County. This would be the municipalities, the villages, the school districts, the soil and water conservation districts. All would, would see a proportionate decrease in their revenues and whether or not they choose to or can absorb that is, is unknown as well. So again, the best we can do is provide the best guest estimate. Depending on what all of the taxing authorities do, many property owners will see between a twenty-five-dollar increase to almost, if we're looking at that higher end, almost two-hundred or two-hundred-and-fifty dollars of property tax increases without any relief for homeowners. So again, the two-thousand-dollar taxable value that homeowners get is not indexed for inflation like the constitutional amendment number two purports to do that. So that means that in the coming years, that two-thousand-dollar exemption would see a lower benefit as the ten-thousand-dollar benefit for veterans goes up because that is indexed for inflation. The other vulnerable populations are those who are on our value freeze. So right now, if you're over the age of sixty-five years of age and make less than forty-one thousand dollars, your value is frozen. That doesn't mean that your tax rate is frozen. So if the tax rate increases, even though your value stays the same, you would increase that, and that's many of our senior citizens. Individuals with a disability, so people with disabilities, which could include veterans who are also limited on income or also have their valuation frozen. They would also proportionally see that as well as, you know, the, the veterans who are not a hundred percent disabled. If the mill rate goes up, their amount of tax savings would also have to be sort of measured out. So we just wanted to make sure that the county commission was aware of the budget implications of potentially seeing between a two-and-a-half million to almost a twelve-million-dollar hit. But also that these constitutional amendments, the tax savings for our veterans to say thank you for their service is not coming from the federal government. It's not coming from the state of New Mexico. It's coming from our neighbors, our senior citizens, our people with disabilities, and our homeowners. I know that it's a difficult concept sometimes to explain to the public, but I believe that it's your responsibility, it's my responsibility as elected officials to be able to provide this information. The, the constitutional amendments do not say, are you willing to pay for this tax savings for veterans? They're more phrased as, do veterans deserve this? And, and I would venture to, to say that yes, veterans do deserve these tax savings for both of these, but it is not the federal government. It is not the state of New Mexico. It is the property owners of Burnaleo County and throughout the state that will be making up the difference for that. Madam Chair, members of the commission, with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Assessor Lara. Any questions? Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Assessor. I really appreciate that education on this. I don't think I had the, the understanding of this until you just explained it. And I think you, you spoke very eloquently to describe to us and described to our whole community what the effect of these constitutional amendments would be, both on sort of county government and county budgets, but I think more importantly than that, on household budgets, right? Because while there is, as you said, there's, there's absolutely much deserved tax savings here for, for our veterans and their families. So that, that is something that will be offset either with, with service reductions, police, fire, roads, or, or through increased revenues on everyone else. And so I, I hadn't heard it explained in that way, and I think I have a pretty good understanding of it now. I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question for interim manager Reagan. So you, you've met with the assessor and understand that the two-point-five to twelve million shortfall basically for our budget is, is an accurate assessment if this, these constitutional amendments pass? That would be the ramifications for Burnaleo County budget?
Yes, Madam Chair. We've been working very closely together. We even pulled in our financial advisor, Eric Carrigan from RBC Capital, to look at it. We assessed the information from various viewpoints. Again, a lot of the data is not available. So working with FY twenty-three, I mean, Tax Share twenty-three data, which is known, calculating it that way, looking at what the FIRs from the Legislative Finance Committee, and then our own data that we have for FY twenty-four. So we spent some time and we've discussed it, and we've been working together on that. So in terms of, depending on when it's made effective, it could be effective as early as the FY twenty-six budget, which we are in the process of working on right now. So we will prepare revenue estimates, assuming that it didn't pass, but it probably will pass, so then we'll have a line item adjustment to reduce the budget and then say, this is our starting point. We cover all of our existing expenditures, and then we see what we have left. So we may have to look, reassess priorities, maybe no new initiatives, things like that. But we will make sure that the county's current services are whole, and we just not, might not be able to take on any new items. There are opportunities for the commission to do different things, such as increase taxes if you were to choose that, but I don't know that that is something that you would want to entertain or that we should entertain at this point until we understand fully the impact of everything. It might take a year before, after those first tax bills because it's going to be an after-the-fact thing that we'll be able to measure. Because the state will say, this is how much was taken out. This is how much you owe us, Burnaleo County, or Sandoval County, or City of Albuquerque, or whoever it is. So, but we do have to be cautious so that we don't overspend or overcommit ourselves with this out there. Of course, we'll know November fifth, and then it'll have to go through the legislative session.
And so you're prepared to assess this, you know, depending on the outcome of the election? We're ready to do that kind of hard look at our numbers and be ready for a prioritization basically at budget time to determine what we do?
Yes, so when we present the budget to you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, those, one of those workshops, we will have that information and we'll have those items so that we can start looking at that. We'll be working with departments as well, so, to prepare ourselves. It'll be similar to the activity that we did when we had the, the COVID adjustments and we had to reduce our revenue projections. And so we prepared, prepared that information and we're able to get through that, looking at where we stood and what things we were going to take on or not going to take on or delay or postpone. So.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Vice Chair Olivas.
I had a follow-up question either for, for Mr. Assessor or the interim manager. It sounds like enabling legislation will be needed at the state level?
For at least constitutional amendment number one, we believe that there will need to be enabling legislation. Current legislation requires that the, the state Veteran Services Department provide certificates before a county assessor is able to apply that those proportionates. There currently is no mechanism for the Veteran Services Department to issue percentage waivers. We, again, is, is Madam County Manager Reagan, send, there's a lot of missing information. This is one of the pieces that is missing. And we hope that some of these questions will be addressed once we know whether or not the constitutional amendments have passed and once the legislature meets for the sixty-day session coming up. So yeah, it, it could be as, as early as 2026, depending on what the state legislature does during the sixty-day session.
And, and a follow-up to that, so individuals, are, are individuals required to opt into this? So veterans would need to obtain that waiver, and then they would need to, you know, go through your office to, to obtain that exemption?
Correct. But in 2023, the state legislature also changed the requirements for disabled veterans. At that time, it was only a hundred percent disabled veterans. Just to give you an idea, we currently have about forty-five-hundred veterans, four-thousand-five-hundred, a hundred percent disabled veterans. Some estimates are as high as fifteen thousand veterans that would have some sort of disability. And there is no deadline for them to apply for the current tax year. And so that is something that we're also very concerned about because yes, they are required to get the certificate from Veteran Services and come in and fill out an application, but there is no deadline for them to come and do that. So it could be December thirty-first, you know, notices of values have gone out, certification has been done, tax bills have come out, and then they come in and say, well, I now have, you know, a disability rating of twenty percent, or I went from twenty to fifty or sixty, and now we have to reduce the taxes that are paid for those. And again, maybe if it's four thousand, five thousand veterans, maybe not that big of a deal to a county this size. But if we're talking fifteen thousand veterans, that, that could be, again, you know, just for Burnaleo County, it, it could be in the millions that, that we have to then readjust. That is a very serious concern, not just for Burnaleo County, but for every other county in the state if that deadline is not amended at the state legislature in the coming thirty-day session.
So it sounds to me like we, as, as I know you are and all of us are, we need to be very engaged with the, this upcoming legislative session on this issue. I see our lobbyist, Mr. Weeks, in the back there. So I'm sure he's listening and taking notes here that we need to be engaged in this and engage our partners as well because it, it isn't just going to affect Burnaleo County. My understanding is APS, our, our students and kids, the City of Albuquerque, all those other taxing entities that you mentioned will also be affected by this. So certainly appreciate you raising this issue.
And we, so Madam Chair, Commissioners, on behalf of Linda Stover, I know she represents Burnaleo County at NM County's Board. Thank you for the resolution that you guys passed, making the priorities of NM Counties. And so we can take that so that your lobbyists can go and lobby on your behalf. Two of the things that you voted for are equitable disclosure and an increase in the head of family exemption for homeowners to sort of offset some of these things as well. Those two things will help broaden the base. That may help lower the rate for property owners across the state. So Madam Chair, Commissioner Olivas, we really would appreciate in those conversations that you have as NM Counties is and all of their individual county lobbyists are pushing for equitable disclosure and an increase in the head of family exemption would be very beneficial to the property owners in Burnaleo County but across the state. So appreciate that. Thank you.
I see no further questions. Thank you, Assessor Lara. Appreciate you all. Item six B, Behavioral Health Initiative, Dr. Wayne Lindstrom.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Wayne Lindstrom, Deputy County Manager for Behavioral Health. I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Rifka Stern, who is the Chair of the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board. And she's here to present on the buprenorphine shortages that we're experiencing in New Mexico and a proposed letter to the governor and the attorney general in response to those shortages.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak with all of you again today. I've been here a few times. We, the Addiction Treatment Advisory Board, ATAB, has written a letter to the governor and attorney general to address this issue of shortages that can happen in some of the pharmacies. This came about because, from an unintended consequence of the opioid settlement. There was a distributor settlement agreement that was made that there were thresholds for particular drug groups. These were the opioids that, that if pharmacies were prescribing too many of them, that, that a level was reached and then they couldn't, they couldn't distribute more of those. However, as we know, buprenorphine is a life-saving drug for the treatment of opioid use disorder. And it got in with the rest of these other opioids that have been over-prescribed and abused. So what's happened is that some of the pharmacies are only are only given a certain amount of buprenorphine or suboxone for the month, and if they have too many people getting prescriptions, they run out. And that is a very big problem for people who are trying to get help for their opioid use disorder. I mean, this can cause abrupt withdrawals if they can't get their medication. This can cause the, you know, the patients coming in to get their medicine to get very upset because, you know, they're in treatment, they want to be in treatment. And so, then they get mad at the pharmacists. It's not their fault, the pharmacist, because they don't know what the levels are. They, they don't know how to anticipate. And then they get barred from that pharmacy. They could, you know, it can be switched to another pharmacy, but that means a person has to go further to get it. If they're, get fed up, then they stop treatment, and they can go back to using. This can cause overdose deaths. There's just a lot of unintended consequences. So, this letter is to ask that the Governor and Attorney General take this very seriously. And an executive order has been written up by the New Mexico Society for Addiction Medicine to address these issues. So, the, our letter from ATAB is to support the letter from the New Mexico Society of Addiction Medicine to go to the Governor and Attorney General. I stand for questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Barbour?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Stern and Dr. Lindstrom, so much for bringing this. I am, I've never heard it explained that way. For the last four years, I tell everybody, I've been to everything I could, and I kept hearing at the state collaborative meeting that Rio Reba specifically had been, that many of the advocates there had been reporting, and reporting the understocking of buprenorphine and other life-saving drugs. I didn't understand that it was part of, partially. This is the first time I've heard it explained that way. So, I don't know if that just came to people's realization, or, because I've literally been hearing this for two years.
Right, I've been hearing it for a number of years, too, and I didn't understand it either until more recently, when it was presented to us at the NM ASAM meeting about the, the cause of this. And there have been certain people who have been petitioning to get this changed. And Senator Heinrich has just introduced a bill into the Senate with the representative also called the BUP in Recovery Act to try and address this. But again, that can take a while to get through. So, we are asking the Governor and Attorney General to make this executive order, to make, to declare this a public health emergency so that the pharmacies can get the medications they need. So, we're asking for your support in this letter to, to send to the Governor or Attorney General.
Well, thank you so much, and I would definitely sign that nice and big. Do we need a motion?
Madam Chair, if I could just clarify quickly. So, the role of the ATAB is advisory to the commission, and so, Dr. Rifka Stern is here to review all and recommend that the, the letter be sent from the county to the addressed entities. So, at the direction of the Chair, you can direct staff to review the letter, and we can sign it from Madam ICM Shirley Reagan, or from Chair Baca.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it has been reviewed by Dr. Lindstrom and others, was, we do have it written up with hopefully your support of this letter.
Wonderful, I'd like to ask the Chair to move that support.
I, I have a question for Dr. Lindstrom. So, you, you fully recommend, I'm reviewing this letter here now on my laptop, and you've reviewed this, and so, if we were to defer this to, to staff to work with you, or you're ready to, to recommend signature on this? Any ramifications for the request to call it a public health emergency, for example? Or anything like that?
Madam Chair and members of the commission, sometimes these things become complex, if you will. And my understanding, even subsequent to this letter being drafted, that there's an executive order that is issued, reissued monthly with regards to this issue. But I've not seen that executive order, had a chance to review it. So, if it is the will of the commission that we learn more about some of these permutations, if you will, I certainly am open to further analysis and consideration.
And the executive order you're talking about is from the Governor?
I'm sorry?
The executive order you're talking about is from the Governor's office?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I guess that's what, I'm, I think that we are all in support of what you're talking about, and the, I mean, I, I shouldn't assume, but I'm hearing some support here. And so, I guess I would defer it to the staff to talk with the, your cohort, or your, your colleagues, I guess, at the state, and defer it to the county manager for signature? If, if that's the will of the group I'm, I'm hearing? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
We move on to item six, let's see, six C. UNM Hospital Report, UNM CEO Kate Becker. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. And our report is in your packet, but I have a few updates that I'm actually really excited to share. So, the first one is, the groundbreaking for our Replacement Children Psychiatric Center is coming up next Monday, October twenty-eighth, at eleven AM. So, we're very excited about that, hope to see all of you there. The second one is, a little update on the Crisis Triage Center. We had a twenty percent increase year-over-year in patients requesting crisis services, now that we have the Crisis Triage Center open. And for the month of September, we had twenty-four admissions with a seven-day average length of stay. So, that's very exciting. And then a couple of updates from last time, when I was here. Excuse me, first of all, we are going, we found out we can change the name of the heading of Charity Care in the report to UNM Care. So, the next time you get this report, that'll say UNM Care there, so that's good news. And then, secondly, on MDC. This is really, it's awful and impressive at the same time. So, these are just numbers for the month of September. In the month of September, as the medical and behavioral health services provider, we responded to two thousand two hundred and seventy medical and nursing sick calls for the month of September. We provided one thousand one hundred and forty-six behavioral health visits. We had eight hundred and thirty-one patients who detoxed, one hundred and thirty who had suboxone inductions, two hundred and twenty who were maintained on suboxone, and twenty-eight who were referred to the Bridges Clinic for ongoing follow-up through ASAP. So, those numbers, you will see that referral piece continue to go up as we continue that warm handoff process with the community. But I know last time we had spoken about just sort of what was the volume of, of services being provided at MDC, and we are creating a report to share with the Joint Powers Authority, but thought you might want to hear these here as well. So, for our next report, we can, if that's helpful, we can include those numbers in here as well. And also, quick, just in follow-up to the last discussion, we are not experiencing suboxone shortages at MDC. So, because, I think it's because of the kind of pharmacy that we are. So, that's good news in terms of, for the folks who are out there, we've had that available. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Casada, are you leaning forward?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Commissioner Barbour?
Yes, please, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for bringing, I, that was one of my questions, it was about the MDC data, because I know we talked about that, and I asked for that last time. So, thank you so much. I want to look at these in comparison to your other data. But, so, a couple, in our packet, on page thirty, packet page thirty-four, fourteen. Sorry, I was looking around here more, making sure I knew what I was talking about. The thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, okay. So, I'm just interested, thank you, I, I just love that this, I'm now four years in, understanding it, and feels more, I, I'm thankful for the transparency in the report. I just, my first question is, how, why are both the long waits for both primary care and specialty care clinics? What would you just sum that up to? And it's sort of stayed flat, hasn't improved much, I guess by a little, since twenty twenty-three, a year ago, but.
Wait time for vi, for visits?
Yeah, day out for first available appointment, sorry, on page thirty-four, I was looking. So, page thirty-four, the wait time to get your first available appointment is, you know, around thirty to forty days, depending, and it's only decreased a little bit. Is there a reason why those wait times remain so big?
Yes, ma'am, it's the combination of demand with the number of providers that we have available. And so, there's probably two things that are important to know. The first one is, as we expand physical capacity, we've been able to expand recruitment of providers. So, a good example of increasing primary care capacity is the new clinic that's going up at Ninety-Eighth and Gibson, that will enable us to add not only additional providers, but there, that will be a family medicine residency training clinic. So, that will also enable us to train additional providers. And the second thing is really that training of the healthcare workforce. So, all of UNM is actually, and President Stokes has stated this, focused on expanding our healthcare workforce. That is the number-one priority of the entire university at this point. And so, Dr. Richards is going to be sharing more information about the timing of those increases. But there's been some real success in increasing the number of nurses that are available. They've expanded the accelerated BSN program and the freshman direct entry programs. So, they're actually graduating significantly more nurses now than they were five years ago. So, that's really good news. Next step is, how do we make sure that we also graduate more physicians and get more folks to stay in the system? So, it's really expanding first, physical capacity, so that we have room for providers, and then recruiting providers, and then training providers, kind of all at the same time.
Thank you, and, and if I may, Madam Chair, thank you. To that, second part, thank you for mentioning the expansion of the clinic. I know, I've been here four years now, or almost four years completely. I've been hearing about the extension of clinics. I think that before, they were supposed to maybe be done by now, or, I think, one done per year, something to that effect. What can we expect that those clinics to be open? I think on page sixty-four, you talk about the, on package page sixty-nine, we did talk about the intention to build four new facilities in, in.
Yes, ma'am, so, I've been here since twenty eighteen. In twenty twenty, because it was before COVID, we opened the new senior health clinic, along with the Movement Disorders Clinic. So, that was new, expanded primary care space for seniors. Then this last year, we expanded Lobo Care, which is primary care for patients, for employees, and students, and family members. Then, the primary care clinic at Ninety-Eighth and Gibson is actually just completing design, so they'll be breaking ground on that. And there's been a little construction at that intersection as well, so that'll be good, because that'll enable traffic to get in easily. And then we'll continue on that path. I, I would say that construction of the tower has caused us to spend some effort and time on that. But we know that we also need to continue to expand our primary care footprint.
Thank you so much, yes, I think that'll make big improvements, thank you. And also on package page thirty-six, there's, and this is the MDC stuff, so, I had questions around it. Whoa, to look at the numbers in comparison, so, I mean, obviously, you're at MDC. These numbers are huge, I think they, I would hope that they could be included in this report, that the new numbers you just gave us. Obviously, we're seeing so much more now that we're able to be in the space, right? So, this was before, who came to us, either out from, directly from the jail? Right, this unpaid, on our packet, under MDC, inmates receiving hospital services, sorry.
Yes, ma'am, the report contains those patients who are transferred from the jail to the hospital, or our clinics for treatment there.
Okay. And the, but these numbers that you just gave, and we'll be able to see those, or those are already in the joint power agreement report that happens, how often does that?
That, our next meeting will be in December, and so, this will be in that report.
How often does that meet, once a month, or is that?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, thank you. I'll have to pay attention for that report. I have just a couple more questions, if I may, actually, thank you, Chair. So, thank you for clarifying about the changing the charity care to UNM Care. You know, a little bit of language goes a long way, I think. I also see here that, is the, why is the number, so, it looks like these are encounters by funding source, so I will, again, super appreciate the transparency here that we can look at and see clearly. It looks like maybe, I, I can't tell from previous years has, and previous reports, is this number staying pretty flat? Is it going up, is it going down for number of encounters?
The total number?
The total number of encounters.
I don't know off the top of my head. I would tell you that from a volume perspective, the number of patients in the hospital continues to be above a hundred and twenty percent. So, it's going to be either flat or a little bit higher, because there's not much room for it to go significantly higher, if that makes sense. That speaks to the physical capacity constraint.
Okay, and then at the same question for, right, their financial assistance to patients by county, obviously, Burnaleo County's the largest. Has that been, stayed pretty flat in the expectation of the charitable, the charity care costs?
I'd have to look at the trend to tell you the answer to that. Because this is just for one quarter.
Yes, okay, I'll have to try and pay attention to that as well. Thank you, and I, this one, I think is sort of important. Under the, package page fifty-one, UNM Care, let me get to there, sorry. So, UNM Care enrollment seems to be, and this is, so this is, UNM Care is our charitable care, I'm glad to see the name change, enrollment seems to be going down. What, what would you say why that? And then it's definitely not being replaced by a number of enrollees into Medicaid. And I know there was the winding down and all those pieces. I think I would have anticipated that the number of people enrolled in UNM Care would have increased since the winding down of Medicaid, but it looks like it's going down.
I'm not sure which page you're on.
Sorry, the package pa, or page thirty-one, or package page fifty-one? Page thirty-one is.
Okay, UNM Care enrollment and Medicaid applications completed?
Yeah.
So, this reports on UNM Care enrollment counts, which, as you're seeing, has gone down just a little bit. I mean, it's a difference of about, it's, it's kind of bounced up and down between forty-six hundred, it's gone as high as fifty-two hundred, and as low as forty-four hundred. So, it's essentially flat over that period of time. The number of Medicaid applications, those are completed at the hospital. So, folks may have completed their application elsewhere or otherwise enrolled.
Okay, but for what UNM, like, is there, so when somebody is, gets, if they are getting off UNM Care, or if there's a patient that comes in without Medicaid, or is there someone available right away to say, we can help you apply for UNM, for either UNM Care and/or Medicaid?
Patient Financial Assistance will immediately offer to screen you for UNM Care if you are a person who's eligible, who needs to be eligible for UNM Care. In terms of whether you choose to apply for Medicaid at that point or not, you can, and somebody will help you with that. But you may also decide to say, oh, I want to look at what my options are on the exchange, and I want to see if there's something else that might be available to me. So, timing depends a little bit on the patient's circumstance.
And, and right now, do, like, we're active, the UNM is actively asking at those care when people are either uninsured or underinsured, people, there's somebody actively?
We, yes, ma'am, we always try to find people coverage, because BeWell will subsidize coverage for people also, so we always want to try to help people find coverage.
Thank you, and then to that very same question on the next page, page fif, package page fifty-two, or page thirty-two. So, both unique patients is continue sort of peak at certain times, which may not be, may be random. But the other piece about scheduling financial assistance appointments seems to have really gone up. Would you, do you know why that is? It's almost double from just June.
Scheduling financial assistance appointments usually fluctuates with staffing in the financial assistance office. So, it's usually connected to when we have lower staffing, or we're in a period of recruiting new people, then usually the days out for appointments goes up. And then, once the new people get oriented, then it comes back down again.
Okay, so this should remain between that ten and twenty-five days consistently with?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, last couple of questions, if I may, page, package page fifty-nine. And or page thirty-nine, I guess. So, COPE is, can you remind us what COPE stands for?
Oh, that's a trick question. But COPE is the, I don't know what the exact wording stands for, but it's the primary care clinic for people who also have substance use treatment.
Okay, great. And that number also seems to have gone, I guess I'm just like always surprised by the numbers when I think our financial aid assistance should be even way higher. I know it's sort of seen flat that page we're just looking at. I would attis, I would imagine that it would have gone lower with the Medicaid wind down. Um, but, and, but it didn't, so I'll keep looking at that. But for this one, to see this going down when we know the epidemic is happening outside, what would you say is the miss here? Or the difference?
Well, the, the number of patients, encounters, and doses is flat. Those haven't changed, and that's limited by the number of providers and the physical space. So, until there's more space and more providers, that number will stay pretty much flat.
Around the number of home encounters that we can. And do we have any measure then to say what the need is, like, that we're not able to meet if we're?
That's a difficult question to answer, because for, for UNMH specifically, our role is to be part of the community of providers, and so it's hard to say overall what the community need is compared to what we would be meeting, or what other providers might be meeting.
Well, do, is there any data in there that maybe, that we're document, that you all are documenting at UNMH to say, well, these are the number of, we've had to turn away, in other words, that, because we're already at our capacity here, a waiting list per se?
I believe there is a waiting list. I can find out what that number is, if that would be helpful.
Please, thank you so much. And last, I was, I'm, again, I'm very thankful for the transparency in these pieces. Um, but I, uh, was to put, the number of opioid patients seems flat. Is that for the same reasons that you just explained?
Exactly.
Okay, so these are gonna stay flat even though we have greater need until we're able. So, what can we do to try and prioritize? Wait, these are some of the biggest things happening in our county, in our country, but, right, specifically.
And that's a really good question. And so, as an example, we have an addiction medicine fellowship, which helps us train providers for this work. The most recent two graduates of the addiction mel, medicine fellowship actually both took jobs at MDC, which we're very excited about. But that means they're not providing care in the community, so the community clinic capacity isn't expanding, but the MDC treatment capacity is available. So, it's, um, it's kind of a how fast can you produce people, and then where do they take jobs? We're very thankful that they went to MDC, though. That was good.
Yes, and I think, uh, from some of the data, it shows that that might be the, the, the place to start. So, I'm grateful that they're there to, I just wanted to make sure, like, and the suboxone and methadone encounters, is this also, I just, I guess I'm, I, I heard recently in a meeting that there's a waiting list for medical assisted treatment, not just at UNM, but just in general, that there's people who want it and can't get it. And that pains my heart, because I think that would make a lot of difference. If there are folks who want medical assisted treatment, can't get it, um, then, and then, and so when I see these numbers, this is, this are the same reason that you're saying that we just don't have capacity to meet a bigger need? Or is there anything else that's being seen here?
I don't think there's anything else besides the number of providers and the space that's available.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for being ready for all the answers.
Any other questions? CEO Becker, thank you so much. This is a very in, informative, um, report you provide quarterly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Move on to agenda item seven, appointment to advisory boards and committees, seven A. Dr. Lindstrom, Behavioral Health Advisory Board.
Again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Uh, we convened the first meeting of the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, uh, last week. And, um, I'm really pleased with, um, the diversity and the expertise and the experience levels of the people um, that we have on the board, and I think it will serve the county well. Um, I'd like you to consider, um, uh, a motion to nominate and appoint, uh, Dr. Katie Tiffany Morrison. She is an assistant professor and pediatric psychologist at the Department of Pediatrics and Psychiatry at UNM's Health Sciences Center. And, um, again, I think she really brings the kind of expertise that further builds on the strengths of the current membership.
So moved. So moved.
One second. Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. Any questions?
I just, I just want to thank you again, if I may. Thank you again for moving so quickly on this. And, um, I think, you know, like I just said with, um, CEO Kate Becker, that it is, um, we're addressing the world's biggest needs right here in our county, and I think that's why you're having such great applicants for these advisory boards. So, thank you for moving, and it looks like you're gonna have a robust, smart team.
Thank you.
Before the questions, I call a vote. Uh, we need a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Chair Baca?
Yes. Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Barboah?
Yes.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. Move on to item eight, approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please provide resolution numbers for item eight A?
Yes. Eight A one is FR twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-two. Number two is FR twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-three. Number three is FR twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-four. Number four is FR twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I moved in seconded. All those in favor? Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Chair Baca?
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Barboah?
Aye.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We move on to item nine, adoption of ordinance amendment to the county code. Madam Clerk, can you please issue an ordinance number for item nine B?
There's no number required.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on, on A. Thank you. Nine A, um, County Attorney Ken Martinez.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. This is a, um, for publication purposes, to come back and vote, uh, on it after it's been published for thirty days. This is an edit to the ordinance that, uh, exists at one. Section two dash one thirty-seven, and it deals with restrictions on employment. And I'll just read it so it's easier to understand. The county shall not enter into any agreement, uh, any arrangement or agreement for remuneration for consultant work, part-time or full-time employment in any capacity with elected officials for a period of twelve months from and after the elected official has left office, period. And, uh, then what becomes kind of a newer sentence to our ordinance. Elected officials shall have the, uh, ability to appoint their deputies as he or she chooses, and as provided by statute. Uh, in essence, and, and I can defer to Commissioner Casada, this is dealing with an existing provision in our Code of Conduct that has a cooling off period for electives, so that they would not come back and, uh, work for the county for one year. However, it does also provide that a countywide elected official could hire, uh, their exempt staff, uh, and, uh, allowing them to do that. And this is basically, uh, a copy of the Sandoval County ordinance. There are, uh, I guess, three counties that have these cooling off periods for electives. Um, and the first would be Burnaleo County, second Sandoval County, and I think Dojana County's recently adopting a Code of Conduct similar to the county, uh, of Burnaleo ours. Uh, so this one would just be looking at the fact that a countywide elected, kind of a constitutional county officer would be able to appoint their staff, not opening up for everything else, very small surgical amendment to it. And I'll defer to Commissioner Casada, who is the prime sponsor, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Casada?
I, yeah, I, I think you pretty much summed it up. That was just my thought, that, you know, if somebody came in and wanted to appoint uh, as an elected official, that they would have, uh, the power to do that. This does not, uh, this does not in any way let, you know, county manager or somebody hire somebody in uh, without going through the cooling off process. This is just basically kind of saying that, um, if I was elected, you know, next term as a county assessor, and I wanted to use someone that was either an elected official or worked, uh, as an elected official in some capacity, that I could appoint them to a position, because I, you know, definitely want to put my best foot forward and do, and, and make sure that, uh, the transition and, and the work is done. Um, so, uh, I know that probably in the future, more people will, will kind of, you know, tend, tend to move towards this. And I just thought this would be a great time for us to, uh, to look at it and, uh, change it.
Uh, Commissioner Barboah?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Casada, for bringing this forward, and thank you, Ken, for explaining. I know I had gotten to talk to you a little bit about before. I think I understand it, and I've had three constituents reach out to me in the last week about this piece, and I, I was trying to explain it in the same way it was explained to me. Um, except I think part of, well, a couple people were like, this is good government to have this twelve months. I also was concerned, because I, I do think of in this position, in the same, um, scenario that you're giving, Commissioner Casada, that, like, if, if us in an authority position now work with a bunch of staff that see us in this authority position, and then we decide to, um, if there was somebody working incorrectly to say, oh, well, if you help me here, I'll make sure I get you in there. And I don't, I don't think that that's your intention here. I just worry about, because this is, this would be longstanding, right? This isn't just for one year. This is, this would change our Code of Conduct for the long term, correct? I just, I, is there, um, can any relief from that? I guess, oh, I guess my first question, sorry, I'll regather myself. My first question is, what do we think, you've named the cooling off period, is that, that's the reason it was placed in the Code of Conduct in the first place?
I, I, I would guess that that was why it was placed. I wasn't here when it was placed, you know, and I don't know the specific instance, but it's not uncommon. However, um, thirty-three counties, only three counties speak to this. So, Burnaleo, Sandoval, and Dojana. Uh, Sandoval has this, which is a balance between, you know, the cooling off period, especially with regard to going back to management, but saying that if you're a countywide elected official, such as, you know, sheriff, assessor, uh, whatever treasurer, whatever that position may be, they may want to be able to hire somebody that's, uh, now going elected. And now, in other counties, that's, um, allowed for, uh, and maybe that's what, that's looking at. So, it's, it's, it's not a big open door. It's a very small one, because the, uh, constitutional county officers may want to hire, uh, former electives. And I think that's what the Sandoval County ordinance was getting at.
Can I, just to what you just said, can I ask, um, you said countywide, so not county commission, because we're districts, but countywide uh, electives, and that, that's what makes this all so narrow? Okay. Thank you. And this, today, we're just talking and discussion. We'll be voting on this in a month, in thirty days or more?
I'm sorry, didn't hear the last.
I was just asking, this is just discussion. We'll be voting in thirty days.
That's correct.
So, I'm, I'm.
Just, I, I'd like an answer to that, though, Ken, because, uh, there was a question that Commissioner Barboah asked that I'm not clear on. Um, because my understanding, perhaps, uh, was that the Code of Conduct, when it states that a county elected shall have this cooling off period, it was intended for the people at this dais, the county commission, which would place, um, and which would, there is a reason for that cooling off, because the, the county commission has the oversight of staff, and then to be hired to become staff, you know, I, I, that's how it's been explained to me, that that's possibly how, but it doesn't differentiate in your language here. So, this is any elected. So, a county, under this scenario, a county commissioner could be appointed by a newly elected official as it's written now. I mean, that was the, and, and what was the intent of the Code of Conduct when this was written? I just don't want any unintended consequences, and we really need to deliberate over, over this carefully.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that's a great question, and I'll do the best I can to answer it. The original, uh, county, uh, language was just that there's a cooling off period for all electives, period. And, and, and so if you look at the very first sentence, it would have, uh, said after the elected, uh, official has left office, there's an additional sentence that comes to us by way of the Sandoval County, says elected officials shall be able to appoint their deputies as he or she chooses and as provided by statute. The provision from statute means that we've done a sweep of other statutes, including the, uh, Governmental Conduct Act, the state of New Mexico, and there's not a current prohibition against doing this, so there's no state prohibition. Their only prohibition we could find was a county prohibition, and as I said, there's three counties that have this prohibition or this waiting period. This seems to be the, kind of the middle piece one that comes out of Sandoval County, and it applies to elected officials appointing their deputies. And I, and I would guess that what that is speaking to is that the electives have the ability to bring in uh, what we would call their political appointees, you know, outside of the merit system. Uh, and it's important to them to bring in their teams. Uh, so this is saying, we understand that there's this waiting period, but if there's someone that you would like to appoint as an elected official as part of your team, you still have that opportunity to do that. And, and I think that's what the balancing act of Sandoval County was trying to do. I hope I'm answering your question well, but I'm happy to take any other questions.
Yeah, partially, but we can continue. Commissioner Olivas, Vice Chair Olivas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, initially, when I saw this, I, I sort of thought this was benign enough. Um, but, uh, like Commissioner Barboah, I heard from several constituents over the last few days, um, and did a little more thinking, did a little deeper dive into the Code of Conduct, and, and just thinking about the role of elected officials, uh, and, and, um, their, their role after office. And some of, uh, my greatest frustrations, I think, with some of the other governments, and, and one of the arguments here being made is that most other governments don't have this. I don't think that means that that's the right way to go, just because no one else does it. Um, you know, we routinely see this issue, uh, in Washington DC with K Street and a revolving door of, you know, representatives and senators and folks that have served in the administration, things like that, that go back and forth uh, from lobbying and, and into government. This isn't exactly the same thing, but it's, it's on the same path. Um, I just, the more that I read through this, the more I just wonder, um, how, you know, twelve months is not a long time, and I think that the perception of any kind of undue influence on an elected official, on an office, uh, i- is, is worth the wait. So, I've, I've just, you know, initially, I thought that this was not really a big deal. It's a, it's a narrow enough exception. But I think that legislating by exceptions may not be the best way to go about this. And I think if, if we want to have a conversation about cooling off periods, you know, we, we should have that. But I think that, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm really inclined to, to oppose this at this point, because I just don't think that this is, uh, an actual problem at this point, particularly in the largest county in the state. We, we have a lot of individuals able to serve in different capacities. And I think that in a very small county, I can see where this could be an issue, right? Having a, a cooling off period, and you only have, you know, a limited number of individuals in the community that are of, of working age and available to work and serve in different roles. Um, this might be a real hindrance on government services and the ability of, of government to function in the largest county in the state, you know. I don't think we have that issue of, of not having qualified workforce for elected officials or departments. Uh, and I'm just, again, I'm concerned about the, the look that this gives to government, to those offices that, that might pursue this. And, um, the, the reason that this was imposed in the first place was to uphold that, that high standard of transparency and, uh, ensure that there wasn't that kind of undue influence or, or influence trading, right? One elected official telling a candidate or another elected official, hey, you know, we'll, we'll work something out, and they get a job and that kind of thing. I, I'm not saying that that's happened or will happen, but that's the kind of thing that this seeks to protect against. So, uh, at this point, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna not support this.
Commissioner Casada?
So, yeah, I mean, I kind of get, uh, your concerns. I, I just don't think it, it plays the same. Um, so, I, I agree with the cooling off period for, say, um, you know, in January, uh, the, the Burnaleo County turns around and hires me to run your film office, right? Uh, I believe that's a wrong thing. I believe that's a wrong thing for Bernalillo County to do. I think this is different. This is for elected officials to be able to put their team together. You're not actually hiring somebody because you owe them a favor. It's because you think you're going to be able to put the best team together. It's really hard. I, I disagree, it's really hard to put a good team together. You could just look at the mayor's office and how many people have revolved through that because they cannot seem to put the right team together. And I believe with the experience that we get and that we acquire through being elected officials and working with other parts of Bernalillo County, whether it's the treasurer, whether, you know, it's the assessor or the county clerk. You know, you, you, you create and know the people who are doing a high level job, which is what you would want to do if you were elected and come in and you have the authority to do that. So it's different than really just saying, hey, you know, you're doing me a favor. And, and I think it's completely different than me saying, you know, once I'm out of office, I want you to hire me, you know, in your department, or I want to go run Parks and Rec, right? That kind of kept Art Villacruz from not being the commissioner anymore and then coming back right after and running Parks and Rec again, right? But I do think that sometimes people do have that skill set that should be able to be put on a team. And, and furthermore, I think a year without an income, if you're somebody who doesn't have an income and this was going to be your kind of plan B after you were no longer an elected, I think a year without an income is a pretty big impact. If, if that tends to be the case. So I know it's very complex, I know there's a lot of holes, like a lot of decisions we make. There's a lot of holes and then there's a lot of things that we got to hope that don't happen. I just think that this is sort of a fair way to allow somebody to become an elected official and put their team together. So it does keep the, the cooling off period in place that I could not be hired on at Bernalillo County after I'm no longer a county commissioner. That's in place for a year. And trust me, I'm not coming back to work for Bernalillo County even after a year. But, but I get how that could be influenced, right? And I had, I also had concerns as well, that how can this be used as a, as some kind of weapon? But I don't see it. I'd see it as first you got to win an election and then you put your team together and then you move forward. So that's the way I'm, I'm envisioning it. And hopefully, people who use it will do it that way and not use it as a way to weaponize unelected positions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, I want to agree in philosophy with Commissioner Olivas on the merits of having a 12-month cooling off period. The, I do want to, I kind of think there should be a distinction here, though. You know, it would be one thing, so an instance that I think would be a problem would be as a county commissioner, if, you know, we hired this new oncoming county manager. And there was an agreement that she would then hire one of us or all of us once we, once we termed out of office. Because then, as an elected official, you had all this influence. And then that influence will still stay and you'll be hidden in the hierarchy of the county government. And it'll be very difficult to, you know, to, to find that. That being said, if you leave public office, you can go work at the state instantly, right? So, but if you leave the county, you should be limited to just working in this, in the county structure. However, as a, as an elected official, that's a completely different process. And so I think that's where this, this added language comes into play, that I actually, I like the nuance because it still protects from abuse of, you know, other electeds rearing their power. But it doesn't limit a newly elected or, or even a currently elected official from hiring who they want. When you, and, and the thing is, the, the public votes for the elected official. So their hiring decisions are accountable to the public come election. And so I think that's where the distinction comes in. That's why I'm okay with this. And, and when you look at elected officials in, in every department, I think there's a lot of them who do make questionable hiring decisions. But that's, that's their prerogative. And this language kind of forces them into a, a situation to protect the public that, that I don't think is necessary. Yeah, the, I think it is necessary in terms of just general hiring for the county. But for elected officials, I think they should have a little more autonomy over their own hiring decisions. So that, that's all, Madam Chair. Thank you for the, for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. I guess my question is, Commissioner Casada, the, the language, the amended language that I am reading and that, that the county attorney read into the record does not exclude county commissioners. So I see a bit of a, of a problem in the existing language. And so I want to propose something to you because I do believe that an elected official should be able to hire an at-will employee of, of their choosing. But that, to me, this, this is, there's a bit of a conflict in the language. So I know that the board of, the Code of Conduct Board is considering several amendments because it's old, it's 2017, it hasn't been amended. And I think that we need to do a better, you know, deeper dive into what you're trying to accomplish here. So I want to propose that we defer this action and consider it as part of the larger code of conduct conversation that we are having on amendments and updating. And in that, we might be able to get through this, this conflict that I see in this language now. So with that, I mean, I guess I ask you the question.
You know, I, I would, I would counter with, you know, if you could give us the two weeks to rewrite this in a way that made more sense to you, to where it wasn't conflicting, that way I could get this done before I leave. I'm, you know, I don't think anybody after me is going to pursue this as, as, as much as I am. I'm just trying to fix things that I think I can fix on my way out. But I agree with you, it tends to obviously confuse the reader a bit. And, and I get that, right? So if one person confuses, then you say, ah. But when two people say, then you start, you start up to thinking, okay, maybe I need to take a shot and, and work with legal to redo this, to make you a little bit more comfortable. But I, I would like to keep it on. And then if in two weeks you don't like it, then perhaps I would, you know, consider a deferment because I didn't get it to where you would like to see it. But I could focus this on now and I just don't know how much I could focus on all of the code of conduct that's coming forward.
Well, that, that's my point, that I, I believe that this has enough of an impact for our community, that it should be included in our, our full review of our code of conduct that I know that our Code of Conduct Board is working on.
But if I could do this now, Madam Chair, this is one less thing that they have to do when they move forward.
But that sounds like a, a little bit of a, of a, of a problem of, of trying to hurry up to decide.
No, I'm just limited in time to get things done that I think should be fixed and changed. That's all.
All right. So I guess I move a deferral and I'll ask for a second. And then we can discuss when that will be placed on the agenda.
I have a question first. I guess I, in this language, can elected officials shall be able to appoint their deputies as he, she chooses and as provided by statute? So deputies, does that have a definition? Does that indicate some kind of level of?
That's the way I understand it. And each elected official and, and I hear what everyone's saying. And, and we did run this to the Code of Conduct, who's working on it. And they're working on, they've done a lot of hard work. And I want to thank Mr. Gutierrez and Veronica and the Code of Conduct Board Chair. They've been working on updates since spring to the entire code of conduct. And they're meaningful and thoughtful. They did look at this and they've had discussions with regard to this, and this is in their workout. And their language is pretty similar. And deputies would mean to me, you know, they're politically appointed at-will hires. And each, and you know, when we swear in, like, the countywide electives, you usually swear in their deputies as well, right, at the swearing in? And those are the folks that we're talking about with. Yeah, I apologize, thank you very much. When the deputies are the ones that are the at-will appointed by the elected officials. And usually at the swearing in, you'll see many times that the deputies will be sworn in at the swearing in at the beginning of the year. So that's, it's a pretty well-known term of who the deputies are.
Follow-up question to that, just so Deb, thank you, because that feels different. I'm worried because I have three constituents. And usually, I, too, when I first looked at this, I was like, okay, it's, I would want to be able to start my team if I was elected to a statewide, to a countywide position. I'd like to have my, be able to have the liberty to pick my team and get the best people in front. And this does sound like a tire, like a deputy. We don't actually have, as far as county commission, I don't know if there's a point when we would. We don't have anyone that's appointed to be hi, we don't appoint people to be hired as a county commission. Our assistants. So that could be our, okay, that would be similar. So a deputy, our assistants would be a deputy-level position because we're able to appoint them?
They are appointed, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barbo, they are appointed as your assistants, not as deputy commissioners because you are the governing board and as the elected. And so the deputies run the elected office operations essentially, whereas your operations is just your single district, not an operation of a department or a service provider. So they would not be equivalent. They are equivalent in status of appointed at-will, but not at the level of a deputy elected. So they are not sworn in, so they cannot act on your behalf.
So this would only pertain to sworn-in appointed positions. Countywide, and I don't see the countywide language in here either, countywide positions.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that is a good suggestion because to make it clear, elected officials, countywide elected officials, we're, we're talking about the countywide because commissioners are elected to districts. But the countywide, you know, the sheriff, assessor, treasurer, I don't know if I have them all. But they would have the opportunity to hire these people and all that saying. And, and I think it was something that Sandoval figured out was those countywide electives would have the opportunity to appoint whoever they want pursuant to statute. So there's no state, federal prohibition. And the county's not making a prohibition for the countywide elected to appoint their deputy, including former electives, even within the 12-month cooling off period. That, I, I hope I'm saying that correctly.
But what I heard you say is that it doesn't say that it's countywide right now. It just says elected officials. So that could, the, the way it's written now, it could include county commissioners after they leave office, could be appointed.
Yes, well, it would be clearer if we said countywide. But also, it's clear that commissioners don't have deputies, but the countywide electives have deputies. And just answering everybody, we're here to do the work and get it done as soon as possible.
So it would be like, so it'd be like Sheriff Allen, he runs his term. And then the new sheriff wants to come in and hire him to, you know, be one of the deputies on something. But he couldn't, right? And even though he was probably the most qualified guy to do and, and to move the, the work forward, based on what we have in place right now, he would have to wait a year in order to do that. And what I'm trying to do is allow people to put their teams together on an elected official deputy level. It has nothing to do with any lower than that or employees or any of that. That cooling off period stays in place. That I was very adamant about keeping in place because I believe it's important. But that's why I'm trying to do this. We have an election coming up and we got people coming in. And I wanted them to be able to pick their own team, that's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I have a deferral on the floor, do I have a second? It could fail for lack of, but I, I, I will ask it out.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to defer. And, and my proposal is that we include it in the full code of conduct review, which I think our Board of Code of Conduct is looking at right now, getting ready to recommend to the commission. And it would allow us to maybe tweak the language, make it much more clear of, of what I've heard here discussed today.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I just wanted to say to, to Commissioner Casada's point of, of something, of getting, getting this done within some period of time. I've asked the, the county attorney to, to be able to sponsor those amendments to the code of conduct and have been reviewing the code of conduct. It is a lengthy and critical document. It applies to all of us, all the elected officials, all the county employees, all county contractors, potential county contractors, and volunteers. There's probably very few other things that, that we oversee from a policy standpoint that's more important than that code. And I, I would just caution against us getting caught up in, I, I don't want to rush that. And of course, that's up to this board, you know, when that comes forward, as to what the timeline on that is. But I think it warrants significant conversations, consultation with our board, consultation with our county attorney, consultation with the contract attorney, and, and with our community, right? This is, there, there are some substantial changes in there. And so I think that I'm a little bit, I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of, I'm open-minded here. I understand what Commissioner Casada is saying, even though I've already kind of said where I stand on this. But if this is something that the board wants to entertain for the next elected officials that come into office in January, whoever they may be, I think that we set ourselves an artificial deadline, considering we only have a couple of meetings left in this session of, of this commission. I think that we need to keep that in mind as we consider a deferral here. And so I, I think, I understand where Commissioner Casada is coming from and wanting to get this done. I'm not going to support it. But that being said, I think that with the larger code of conduct update, we really need to take our time and, and have a methodical approach because it's so important.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Olivas. I, that was sort of why I was hesitating from seconding deferral because I think if, I mean, I, I don't know that I will support this if, if we still have the 30 days. Either way, it gives us time to talk about it and then still vote it up or down outside of the larger code of conduct. And so I, I am struggling with this mostly because I heard from constituents. And then I worry about, I just think good government and I want something that lasts beyond me or any one person. So I don't, yeah, I feel like the deferral just sort of, I'm not sure that, if there's changes to be made, maybe we could just make those and either vote up or down.
Conversation.
I, you know, I feel everybody here, I, I get it. I'm not, you know, I'm not in any kind of space other than, you know, just trying to get some things done. I understand, you know, we're not looking at the whole code of conduct right now. We're just looking at one, one section that I think we could fix right away. And so I, I would really like to have the two weeks to, to get it to a point to where we could agree on it. And that's what I'm asking for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, my motion to defer is to include it into the full deep dive into our code of conduct review. And that's been moved and seconded. So I, unless there's further discussion, I will call that question. So all those in favor of deferral in that regard? Roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
Yes. Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas.
No.
Commissioner Casada.
No.
Commissioner Barboa.
No.
Commissioner Benson.
No.
Okay.
So called.
We are back on the item. Commissioner Casada.
So, uh, yeah, it's just for discussion right now, so we're not actually voting on this. I will, I will make a commitment to you, Madam Chair, that we will go back and we will try to make this something that maybe you might consider in a couple of weeks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So that's a motion for approval.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
No.
Vice Chair Olivas.
No.
Commissioner Casada.
Yes.
Commissioner Barboa.
The vote is to read to say we're voting this in for discussion, and we'll have an up-down and vote in the next 30 days. Because we get 30 days?
30 days. No, it's a 30 days because it's a
But if we don't vote on this now, then it's just null and void, and there's no change to be made.
There's no publication. So the, the motion before the board is to, um, publish for the requisite 30 days.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
So called, thank you.
And that passes, thank you. We will move on to nine B, Economic Development, Industrial Revenue Bonds Development Officer Marcos Gonzalez.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, the Economic Development Staff requests approval of the adoption of ordinance in connection with a proposed project located within Bernalillo County inducing for Sun Lasso Energy to develop a standalone battery energy storage system, um, that's sized in the, in the project plan. The development will be completed with $190, $190 million of total capital investment. Uh, the bonds will provide certain personal property tax exemptions and grossesscy tax exemptions, uh, to defray, uh, the cost of the project. To clarify, this IRB will not be exempting the real property tax, so the dirt, so to speak, uh, that will be continued to be paid to the, uh, county. And so with that, I stand for any questions?
Any questions, Marcos?
I move for approval.
Second.
Madam Chair, if we can have an ordinance number issued.
I apologize, I apologize. Madam Clerk, we, uh, let's see, we need an ordinance number. Thank you.
Yes, ordinance 2024-21.
Okay, and now we will convene a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, we do not.
We do not. Commissioner Casada.
Um, yeah, uh, again, I will, uh, move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
So called.
That passes, thank you. Item 10, Adoption of Resolutions. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers. Item 10.
10A is AR 2024-126. 10B is AR 2024-127. C is AR 2024-128.
Mr. Gonzalez, bef- before you present, um, I, I wanted to make a, a comment for the record. In, uh, 2022, I received a camp- campaign contribution from Jim Long, and we asked the Code of Conduct Board for an opinion on, on that. In '23, they gave us a, a, an opinion that there was no indication that Mr. Long is a restricted donor. But in transparency and, and, uh, for the public, we need to have a good faith disclosure that that contribution was made. And that will, I will say that I can, uh, deal fairly on these issues, and, um, thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, and I wanted to, to say that I was also a part of that advisory opinion that was issued by our, uh, Board of, of Code of Conduct. Uh, I too received some contributions from Mr. Long during that, uh, 2022 election cycle. Mr. Long is a, is a party to the, um, companies making these applications. I do believe that, uh, I am fully capable of handling this matter fairly and impartially as we evaluate the efficacy of these, uh, considerations before us. And, and that does not have any influence on my decision-making tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Casada.
Um, I don't recall whether I've got a donation from Jim Long, but I think I might have. So, uh, I will make the same statement and make the same commitment to, uh, my decision-making up here.
Thank you.
So thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, the Economic Development Staff requests approval for the inducement resolution in connection with a proposed project here in the county to construct, acquire, and install equipment and other personal property for a sawmill mixed use in a manner set forth in the project plan. The industrial revenue bonds would provide certain tax exemptions to defray costs of the project not to exceed 15.7 million. Um, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Gonzalez? I guess I, I would just like to, um, allow you to go all the way through these, because I have some comments about, um, all three of these projects, which are in the, in my district, in the sawmill area, so.
Great. And just for the public certification, too, these were introduced, uh, a little over a year ago, but because the times last, we have had to reintroduce them. So, uh, for those, um, for the public to know that this is not final action or final approval of the IRBs, this is a reintroduction and a reconversation with the county surrounding the IRBs. And then we'll be brought them back at a later meeting for final approval by the commission. So once again, these are just for introduction, for the publication, and for, um, additional community, uh, comments to be heard. So, just for that clarification. So with the second one, uh, this is for inducement resolution in connection with the Sawmill Chaco Residence. And also for acquire and install equipment and other personal property, um, at the Chaco, uh, Residence in a manner set forth in the project plan. And the certain tax exemptions to defray costs for the private investment of not to exceed 70.4 million. And the last one is in connection with the Sawmill Hotel, which also to acquire and install equipment and other personal property for the Sawmill Hotel. And will be used to provide certain tax exemptions to defray the cost of the project. And the total private investment in this project is 76.3 million. And with that, we'll stand for any questions. I always like to note that, uh, Mr. Long is here as well. Should you have any questions specific to the area or to the sawmill campus, as we like to say, with all the other investments that have happened into the sawmill area.
Any questions for Marcos? Uh, Commissioner Barboa.
Um, I don't have, and thank you for briefing earlier to you and Carolyn Tobias. I, um, of course, I, and I was appreciative of the developer, um, being able to, Heritage would tell me to talk to them. I think these are beautiful constructions. I always, always wonder, worry about, um, gentrification, and I think you all are always thinking about that. Um, I think just for, you know, what that means for our communities that have lived there for a long time, I'm so glad, trust, um, Commissioner Baca. And I know, um, Commissioner O'Malley, uh, previous to this, had, um, worked with these guys. I just want to name that, if there's comment or, or over the next, um, 30 days, anything to educate me or, or the community about how we're, um, avoiding possible gentrification when we have so many big, beautiful spaces in one spot. I know that's a hard thing to ask around, but I do think there are communities around there that have been traditionally low-income communities. We don't want to stay low-income communities, but also we don't want to not be able to afford to live where our grandparents grew up. I don't know if there's, just for consideration and ways we can
And Madam Chair.
Educate myself and the public.
And, uh, Commissioner Barboa, we are working with like the Sawmill Land Trust and different groups that are trying to find more affordable housing. Uh, may not be specific in the, uh, sawmill's area specifically, but within surrounding areas. So that way, we are maintaining some affordability within the, um, the area for people to be able to actually work and live in the same area.
I'd like to add to that, um, that's, to me, this is a real investment in the sawmill area, in the Old Town area, in, um, our heart of our, our city, really. And we have been working hard with our economic development team in to address some of those issues. And, you know, I just wanted to say that this, this is a private investment into the community, as I understand it, of $162 million. Um, the one thing that is a really important thing, besides the tax abatement, it's a 25-year term, but the tax abatement, we do have, uh, payment in lieu of taxes that are coming in. And we have worked really hard, this is an internal thing, but those, those payment in lieu of taxes will go to affordable housing. Because th- this site will not have, this is a mixed-use development, but there's no affordable housing in this project. But that, the, and that amounts to, over the 25 years, $21.1 million in the combined campus going toward affordable housing. So we are mindful of that. We've talked with the developer about that, and, and that is really important. I think that, that he's committed to the local community, the local workforce. We also have written into the, the project, um, uh, agreement that, uh, we're considering, um, a clause about the, the best efforts to ensure 25% of the workforce comes from registered apprenticeship programs located in New Mexico. And we've talked about that with other IRBs as an incentive to our, our partners in the private sector to, let's grow our own workforce. That's a really important thing to all of us up here, I think, and that's important. And, and I think, uh, Mr. Long has, has, uh, agreed to that in, in our existing, um, project agreement that's, that's being considered today. So, um, with all of that, I, I, um, urge your support. Um, any other questions for Mr. Long or, or, um, Marcos? Yes, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Marcos, and thank you to the, the development team for, for bringing this project. Um, $162 million in private investment, but what's really important to me, too, is this is about infill development, right? Because so often, a lot of the projects that we work on are, um, you know, they're out in, in the unincorporated areas of the county that are largely undeveloped or underdeveloped. And, uh, this is an opportunity, I think, to advance, you know, some of our climate goals, right? Making our communities more densified, more walkable, more transit-oriented. Um, that's what this allows, right? Bringing that density to the area, bringing some housing, bringing some retail. Um, when I have people from out of town come in, the, the sawmill market is, like, always one of, if not the favorite place to go to. And that's because it's, it's just done in a very unique, a very thoughtful manner that emphasizes the unique culture and the unique nature of, of New Mexico. And I think that's something that, that I've just seen, uh, from this development team, is an emphasis on, uh, on New Mexico, on our hometown here. And so, uh, for, for that reason, I just think this is a really great opportunity to support a local developer and support, uh, something that really shines New Mexico in its, in its best and brightest light. Uh, and do so in a way that supports, uh, a community that doesn't often see large influxes of, of capital and development. And of course, to, to Commissioner Barboa's point, there's, there's always that risk of gentrification, of, of pushing folks out. Um, but we do have incentives of, or, we do have resources available through this development agreement to try and mitigate some of that. And I know that our partners at the city, our partners in the housing collaborative, this is on everybody's list, right? Affordable housing, and, and I think it's worth mentioning, right? This doesn't include affordable housing, but it does include housing. And, uh, there are a number of projects on even the, the collaboratives list that are not necessarily affordable housing. They are mixed-use housing, they are market-rate housing. And so we know that if we can increase the supply of units available, we can reduce the pressure on prices, and that benefits everybody. Uh, and that makes housing more affordable at large through market forces. And so I think, uh, this is an indirect way to do that. Um, I wish it had some affordable housing in there, but I, I get it, right? These are private development decisions, this isn't the, the government doing this. And so, uh, I support this, it is a beautiful project, and really looking forward to seeing this open and see this be successful. I know it will. So, thank you.
Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I think that, um, uh, through my, my term here as a county commissioner, and to see, you know, uh, what, what went on in the sawmill area and, uh, how it has raised the quality of life in that area, um, is super important on how we move, uh, forward as developers. Uh, as part of that, right, as we develop our city and, and our county, that is, it's thoughtful. Um, uh, i- if anyone knows, um, I can't afford to stay at Chaco, but it is a five-star hotel, uh, next to an historic hotel that I can afford to stay in. Uh, and, and so I think, um, it really is kind of diverse on who they serve and, 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 and who they're thinking about as, as, as we build a new c- a community. Um, I have the same concerns as Commissioner, uh, Barboa, uh, you know, but the good news, it's not a stadium. Um, you know, uh, the good news is, is it's stuff that people use every day, and, and, and that really, uh, you know, brings up the quality of life for the residents in that area. And people want to move into that area. It's a great area to move into, it's historic, and it's modern. And I think it was a brilliant move on, on the developers, uh, uh, from the get-go, from the beginning of this project all the way through. And I just want to thank the developers for following through, because for a minute I thought, well, that's it, that's all they're going to do. But now, before I leave, I see a huge next phase, and that matters. That matters that somebody made a commitment to that area, and they're going to follow through. So thank you for that, and, uh, I, a hundred percent support, uh, that area and us moving forward.
So I, we need to move approval for each one individually. So, um, ti- first, I would like to say thank you, Mr. Long, thank you for working with, uh, Marcos's team. Thank you for understanding the value that we place on our community, because I know you have that in your heart as well. So, thank you for your, your time and effort on this, and I, I, I'm sure it's going to be a great project. So, um, I move approval for 10A, um, inducement resolution, AR 2024-126.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Need a roll call vote, please?
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10B, I move, uh, approval of the inducement resolution, AR 2024-127.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
So called.
And item 10C, I move approval of the inducement resolution, AR 2024-128.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that passes. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Item 11, Approvals Finance American Rescue Plan Act. Denise Benavides to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Denise Benavides. I'm the principal financial analyst for the finance division. So the motion before you is to approve amendment number six to the MOU between Bernalillo County and the Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Water UTE authority to provide an additional $608,438.53 in ARPA funding, increasing the total ARPA subaward amount to $64,476,036.14. in ARPA funding, increasing the total ARPA subaward amount to sixty-four million four-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand thirty-six dollars and fourteen cents. The county, in collaboration with technical services and the Water Utility Authority, determined the existing Mesa del Sol non-portable reuse booster pump and reservoir project would be the appropriate place for this funding. If you recall, the funding was made available at the September tenth administrative meeting. Additionally, the amendment will reallocate six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand seven-hundred-and-two dollars and seventy-eight cents of surplus funding from the existing Kerwin Air Force Interceptor Rehabilitation Project, which was recently completed in July of twenty-two-four, to be reallocated to the MDC Water and Sewer Improvement Project. Um, I have with me David, David Laughlin from the Water Utility Authority, if you have any questions regarding these projects. And finally, the last motion authorizes the county manager to execute the subrecipient agreement amendments with the Water Utility Authority for the projects identified in amendment six under the AR- under ARPA to ensure compliance with the statutory and regulatory requirements and terms and conditions of the award. So I will stand for questions.
I move approval, and then we could go to, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I wanted to thank the water authority for being here. Thank you so much. We have a very good partnership, and we, they are a very, uh, strong and, uh, resilient partner in, uh, all of these efforts to get good quality public works out there and built. So thanks for being here, Mr. Laughlin. Any other questions? So it's been moved and seconded. We need a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Chair Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner Barboa.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, Denise. Thank you. Move on to item twelve, discussion, capital improvement program. Burnaleo County twenty-two-five policy priorities for the New Mexico legislative session. Kathy Court to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners. On the agenda tonight is an opportunity for discussion about what might be our twenty-two-five, uh, policy priorities in the legislative session. I'm sorry, and my apologies, it's Kathy Court, Chief of Government Affairs. I forgot to introduce myself. So what I've done for you is compiled, uh, a list of items that, um, basically I keep a file all year. And as I get input about what somebody wants on the next policy, um, priority list, I kind of file that away and I put it all together for you here. We've got several sections of, of priorities. So we've got HB two funding priorities listed for you here. We've got public safety and criminal justice. We've got healthcare services. That needs to be fleshed out a bit with, uh, Commissioner Barboa's assistance, along with Dr. Lindstrom's assistance. Um, we've got some economic development. And, um, finally, I added, uh, just this last week, the constitutional amendments to the anti-donation clause, because we are actively working on a potential solution to, um, the issue of nonprofits receiving capital outlay appropriations and how we might address that in the future. So really, um, I'm, I'm looking for your feedback, uh, about what you see here on the document that, that is in front of you. I'm looking for, um, input. Do you like something? Do you want to see something added? And our sponsors are Commissioner Barboa and Commissioner Olivas. And so the way, um, we can work this is, you know, hearing from you tonight, if you want to discuss this. But mostly it's an invitation to you to look through these policy ideas and priorities, um, ask questions here now. And, um, like we did with our capital outlay priority list, provide me your top priorities that you might like to see on this resolution. I'll get all that input and I'll share it in a format with, uh, Commissioner Olivas and Commissioner Barboa. So, um, with that, I'm, I'm gonna just let you ask questions or, or have a discussion as you see fit. Commissioner Barboa, Commissioner Olivas, however you might want to proceed is fine with me, but it's a starting point.
Thank you, Ms. Court. I'd like to turn it over to the sponsors for, to, to lead the discussion, if you would.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, co-sponsor Olive, Commissioner Olivas. I, um, and thank you Kathy Court for, um, bringing, I, I also, we got to meet with our lobbyist Dan Weeks today just to get his take on some of the things. I know he sent you some of the stuff, and you've been compiling all this information into a nice, tidy package for us. So thank you so much for your work to get us concise and good information. I think we do ha- and thank you for this time period. I, I look forward to folks' input. I would like to ask your suggestion about, um, for the court, for some of the county courthouse. I know I had met with the district courthouses. Um, I plan to meet out, to outreach to, um, Judge Marie Ward, who had approached my office about, um, some of the courthouse needs. And, um, and I, I guess I will invite you and our lobbyists and Commissioner Olivas to that meeting. And are there any, and then I know we, I have a meeting with Dr. Lindstrom about some behavioral health priorities. So just want to say that out loud as we build this priority list. Differ to my co-sponsor.
Thank you, Commissioner Barboa. I think that, um, you know, we've got a, I, I really like the, the format of this list. Um, I think it's, it's relatively concise. Um, I, I do imagine, just in my own discussions today with our lobbyists, that kind of thing, that there will still be some, some changes to the list before us, um, the, the draft that, that we've all been sent. But I think this is just an important session for, for us to all be able to kind of talk about this together, gather some input, ask some questions if need be, and ideally make this, um, an, an even better document. But for me, just, just to kind of state, you know, my goals, I think Commissioner Barboa shares the same as, as does Kathy Olivas, to, um, make sure that this list really reflects the, uh, the highest priorities of, of Burnaleo County, right? It's, it's not meant to be a laundry list, the, a grab bag of, of every problem we have and, you know, throw it on a list and, and send it up to Santa Fe and, and ask them to fix it for us. It's about what are the biggest challenges we have in Burnaleo County. I think we all kind of know those. We, we talk about those like every time we're up here. And then how do we envision the legislature supporting us and supporting our partners like the city of Albuquerque, like the Middle Real Grand Housing Collaborative, like Albuquerque Public Schools? How do we envision the legislature supporting us with relatively specific policy priorities that will help us advance those, those needs? And so I think the list is, is pretty good. I mean, I think we're, we're pretty close. I think there's, uh, a little bit of, you know, language that I personally would like to see changed and am happy to, to, you know, make those proposals as we, as we flesh out the final proposal here. But, um, I just wanted to say, you know, for me, that's kind of the priorities that Commissioner Casada and I used when we put together the, the capital outlay priorities list, right? To make sure that it was really reflective of not just a grab bag, putting everything on there. And I don't think this does that, but I just kind of want to, you know, throw that out there, that I think it's important that we be measured, we be focused, and we be in step with what our community is asking for and with what our legislators are hearing, because they're hearing the same things we are from, from their communities. They're all up for reelection, uh, which some of us are not, some of us are. So I think that it's just important that we have, we make that nuance. And, you know, what I particularly like about the list and the form it's at right now is it starts out with what I think is our number one challenge, number one priority, and that's housing, right? The first two priorities address housing issues. Uh, and there's some very strong language in there relating to behavioral health issues and health, healthcare issues in our community that I feel very strongly about. Uh, I've had some conversations with the sheriff as well about a few other priorities that I think that we can, uh, refine, and, and I think this board would support. But needless to say, I, I just think this is a really important list and, and something that we've got to get right.
I'd like to interject, cause I, I too feel that, um, this priority list should be our priorities. So we want, really want to, I believe, be specific and be very deliberate in our, uh, communal, you know, decision of what those priorities are. And to me, my priorities, I will, I would, I will say to you now, and I, I know that these overlap with some of the governor's priorities, but they are housing, public safety, and water, and I would say also quality of life within that, that last one. So on the housing one, I really do feel it's important for us to talk about the housing collaborative and working collaboratively with this big ask, um, of a hundred million dollars that we're moving forward in our capital outlay and supporting the city's homelessness efforts and their, their, uh, their efforts, uh, uh, in that partnership. Secondly, on public safety, I, I too have talked with, um, Sheriff Allen, and I think it's very important for us to be going up to the legislature hand in hand with our top law enforcement officer of Burnaleo County. And he hasn't fleshed these out yet, but I want to enumerate them, and because the devil's in the details, and we need to make sure that we are spot on with, with our language of how we prioritize something that will, that will work up in Santa Fe. And those are, um, addressing the children's code, felons in possession of firearms, data sharing among law enforcement, something on the competency legislation, because they are going to be talking about that. And so what is the position of Burnaleo County? That's not a small thing, but I would really like the sheriff's take on that. And then the ERPO, the Extreme Risk Protection Order, the red flag law, because we know that there are legislators up there that are going to be putting something forward on that. So that's a lo- a large list. However, I do think that those are critical issues that this legislature and this governor want to take up. And so I would like us to, um, bring, bring Sheriff Allen to the table on, on what does that mean? How do we give them the flexibility to, to, and our lobbyists, the flexibility to talk to our legislators? But how is, are these public safety actions by the legislature and the governor going to impact Burnaleo County and the safety of our, of our community? And then the third one is water. I've spoken with, uh, MRGCD, um, and they, they actually have their, their top issue. One issue is to work with the state engineer, so I think we can fashion that language, work with the state engineer on increasing budget and staffing to address the immediate water management needs. So I think that can be in a s- clear statement. But a second one that I think is under the radar, but is very important, and that is, um, the Recreational Use Act. It is something that the conservancy district struggles with. And as we know, the valley and the asequias and the ditches have conservancy public works running through them. Recreation is not a prime mission of the MRGCD, but we need to address that recreational use act. They, and they are moving forward up in Santa Fe with that. I think, um, that is a really important thing to our constituents in the, in the valley particularly. So those are, those are my three, housing, public safety, and water, Kathy. And I, I'll put it in writing and get it to you, but I, I, you know, really want to make sure that we are clear and focused and not do a, a scattershot approach of our priorities, but really focus on what all five of us feel are, are important to move forward. So thanks for listening, all. Um, anybody else? Sorry. Commissioner Barboa and then Commissioner Casada.
I guess just to say, County Manager, to your last point, um, if those could be explained to me in a way that's specific to the county, which I think you already started, I just want to, sometimes there's so much that could be prioritized. Um, but water in the county and the impacts on the county, I'd love to, um, yeah, yeah.
It is within Burnaleo County.
Yeah, I, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, you know, I mean, those are, those are all the big hot topics that we spend, you know, um, our terms, um, looking at, trying to figure out. Um, so I think they've always kind of been there. But yeah, I, I think that, uh, coming, uh, together as a, as a group, moving forward, uh, on those particular, water especially. We, you know, um, uh, I'm not on the Water Utility Authority anymore, but as long, out of the time that I was there, you know, uh, we hear about, um, this drought that's, uh, that's coming. And as we make decisions on development, you know, it's really hard on us, because we sit in those meetings as well, and we know all development is gonna take water. And so we need to make sure that those are priorities for us to, uh, build something that we know is sustainable. So a hundred percent agree with that. I think the work was done excellently, and, uh, and, um, I'm, I'm here to support it moving forward.
Commissioner Benson, do you have any comments? Hearing now, Vice Chair Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to just say on the, uh, the competency issue, uh, one of the things that I really like about the current version of the, the bill before us is that it places that issue under healthcare. And I know that the sheriff and a lot of law enforcement people feel strongly about that from the, the public safety perspective, as do I. I think it's important to keep people safe, but it's a healthcare issue. It's a behavioral health issue at the, at the core of it, right? Because it's about, uh, the dangers to themselves and to others of having individuals in serious crisis situations, in the throes of, of substance abuse and addiction, on the streets, in our neighborhoods, in our houses, right? We're, we're living with families, right? And the risks that they pose potentially, not everyone, but potentially posed to themselves and to others, right? I mean, I think we often hear the most dangerous place you can be is living on the streets, right? With no supports, and it, it doesn't mean that all of those folks fall into this competency area. But I think it is, at its core, it's a healthcare issue, not a law enforcement issue. And so I like where we have it. I don't, I don't necessarily think there was any suggestion to, to change that. I think the sheriff's input is important, but I think it's also equally important that we get the input of our, uh, our DCM of, of behavioral health and other individuals in the behavioral health space, because I think, um, well, I supported the changes in the special session. I supported what the governor was asking. Um, I think the improvement that could have been made there is, is bringing on those folks that are coming to this from a, a medical perspective, coming to this from a compassionate perspective, right? Not to say that I don't think law enforcement's compassionate. I think they are. I think they care deeply about our community and, and what this means. But it's, it's important that we build that broad coalition and that we address this as the public health challenge that it is, with the interconnections for law enforcement. So, uh, I think that we're, we're in good, a, a good place, and it can only get a, a little bit better by refining that and consulting with our partners. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Ms. Court?
May I add, um, a little bit of some background on the, um, constitutional amendments to the anti-donation clause, just to kind of get you up to speed on the conversations we're having in our work group, which is led by Senator Ortiz Peno, Senator Ortiz Pino, and Representative Kates. But just so, um, the board is aware where we're going with this currently, is amending the constitution, but still re- keeping it intact to prevent against abuses. But the amendment would allow the legislature to provide capital outlay funding to organizations, nonprofits, charitable organizations that are providing services in the community. Because right now, the anti-donation clause does not allow any of that to happen. In addition, the enabling legislation that we are working on would actually create a division under the Department of Finance and Administration that would oversee and vet all capital outlay project proposals by charitable organizations and nonprofits. So, um, you know, from the standpoint of Burnaleo County and our current twenty-one million dollars that we are fiscal agent to for nonprofit organizations, this really is a, is a, is a great idea. It's not a huge change in the anti-donation clause. It still keeps a lot of those protections in place. And more importantly, it puts a big chunk of this burden on the DFA with a panel that oversees and vets nonprofit proposals, very much like what we do, but at a statewide level. It levels the playing field so that nonprofits across the state of New Mexico are gonna be able to attempt to seek capital outlay funds versus how it's happening now. Or if you don't live in a county that supports, that will be a fiscal agent for you, then you can't get capital outlay. So, um, it's a really good proposal. I- if, if approved and if passed by the legislature, of course, this would go to voters in the next general election cycle. And then we wouldn't really see that enabling legislation and money toward this department under DFA probably until twenty-two-seven, so it's a process. But I just wanted to give you the background on where we're going with this, what we're thinking. And, um, you know, they've, they've taken a lot of the feedback from Burnaleo County. They've used our processes to kind of replicate it at a state level, because I think we have a great process here. I really do. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to give you that background, and it would be so important for Burnaleo County to show support. for Bernalillo County to show support for this effort if it, if we were, we're currently drafting a bill. And so if Bernalillo County can stand in support of this, it would be, it would go a long way. And, um, and especially with so many lawmakers who help nonprofits just in our area alone. I'm hoping that we could garner that support. So, I just want to give you that background.
Is that bill of, uh, is it in draft form?
Not currently. We're working on it. I've asked, uh, our, our leader of this little work group, Sephora Neffish, to, she's working with the bill drafter right now. Uh, she's met with the Attorney General's Office, so she's, and she's reporting back to us regularly on her efforts. So, we're hoping to have a draft of a bill in November. And, uh, secondly, what I wanted to bring up when I talk about November, just an awareness, awareness that we still have interim committees that are meeting in November. A lot of them will be, uh, perusing and, and reviewing some of the legislation that is being asked, you know, in the upcoming session, right? So, a lot of these committees are being asked to support legislation, especially the interim Health and Human Services Committee. They're meeting again in November. So, another idea for this commission to consider is allowing the interim committees to complete their work in November and put this resolution on i- in December. So, we can really see what the interim HHS committee endorses and if that's something we should be considering in our resolution, especially when it comes to behavioral health issues. So, uh, Representative Herndon is really taking a lead in that committee. So, anyway, it's just a, a thought for you to consider. Um, I'm, I'm completely open to however you want to proceed, the sponsors of this, but it's just something I wanted to raise.
Commissioner Barboa?
I, I just would like to meet with possibly yourself and Sephora, the folks that are drafting that. I, of course, I support, I would love to see a time that we could support nonprofits, um, thoroughly. I just want to make sure this is a way that, yeah, I'd love to get more information on this.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? Ms. Olivas? Thank you, Ms. Court.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, item 13, announcement of our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Will be a zoning meeting at 3:00 PM here in these chambers. Also, Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, the Board of Finance will meet at 4:00 PM in these commission chambers. And also Tuesday, November 12th, the administrative meeting will be at 5:00 PM here in these Ken Sanchez Commission chambers. And if that is all, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1773.58][1773.58]